The area in yellow is City of Janesville limits. The area in red is also within the City of Janesville city limits, but Milton School District. And then, of course, the green is the school district boundaries. So again, we have the City of Janesville residents, including the Milton, paying 100% of the city's 50%. But we have these residents here, these students, these taxable entities outside the district that pay 0% towards the cost of these school officers. And it's our request that they be allowed to pay part of that, the cost for the school This would help, I think, from a fairness perspective and would also have a little bit less burden for those city residents that live in the City of Janesville but attend the Milton School District. So in summary, we feel that this is just a more fair and appropriate financing of these school officers. And I stand before you, ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief Moore. I appreciate you not saying "pay up or else."
No, that is not part of the discussion tonight.
And it's laudable. The reality is, however, that there are budget consequences happening at the city. And between police and fire and other services, something has to give if needed. I mean, there's only so much money to go around. And the question I asked in the last meeting, which you've answered today, was what would your staffing be if we weren't doing the extra services, if you will, just the normal police staffing of the schools? I believe you said it was .25 officers per school versus the full one we get now for Craig, Parker, and Free Middle School. Is that correct?
Yes.
Your estimate?
Yes.
So I guess now the comment is whether the city had money or didn't, whether we had money or didn't, I think that we should be paying the portion that we're getting the actual benefit of. So we'd be getting a .25 officer in a sense as far as staffing, whether or not we had, you know, through our city tax dollars. And I do believe that it's not a question of who needs money, it is a question of fairness. And so, and when it comes up to the next budget meeting, when you get to that time, which I might have missed the last meeting in October, unfortunately, I would be in favor of having a district, just out of principle purposes, pick up that share of three-fourths of the cost of the officers. So I thank you for providing the data I asked for like a couple, a month ago.
Certainly. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Chief, I'm a little confused about one of the slides you talked about. I think you were talking about the townships that are in the school district of Janesville. And that would be a 10% value, but the city's asking for 25% additional funds. And if you're trying to make those people that live in those townships pay their fair share, wouldn't it be 10% and not 25%?
Yeah, those percentages aren't going to add up. What I'm suggesting to you is if we pulled the officers out of the schools, our patrol officers would still be in the schools, about a quarter FTE per school, and that gets us to the 25%. But when I look at who is paying for the city's portion of these school officers, it's 100% Janesville. And these folks that are in the townships but are part of the Janesville School District aren't paying anything towards that 50%. So I'm not trying to make that 10% equal to 25%. Those are two separate discussion points, if you will. But I'm just highlighting the fact that the people that live in the townships are not paying any percentage towards the city's portion of those school officer cost.
Well, we've never asked them to. We've never asked the townships to contribute.
I think what I'm hearing him saying is that if you're in a city, you're paying
city taxes, the school board taxes, and between the two, they're covering the cost of the police officers. If I live in a township, like I do, I'm paying my school taxes, I'm paying Janesville Township taxes, not the City of Janesville. And so in a sense, that cost of the police officer, us folks in the township, aren't covering it all. And on the flip side, those who live in the Milton School District but are in the city would be paying, you know, through the city taxes, the cost of officers, but not using the benefit because they go to Milton Schools. He's just pointing out that, how we distribute the tax burden between city and non-city residents.
I understood that, Bill.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, I understood that. But if you're asking township people to contribute toward this share, and that's 10%, and we haven't asked the township to contribute, as you live and I live in the township, if we haven't asked the question, you don't have an answer. Okay? And as it relates to Milton, 22 years ago, the board met with Milton School Board to try not to have what is happening now, which is City of Janesville, School District Janesville, City of Milton, and those lines, to try to work on those. That was 22 years ago. So where that is now is really not an issue for me.
Thanks, Chief. I have just a question out of curiosity. The fire department contracts with townships for service?
They do.
But police jurisdiction is strictly City of Janesville limits?
It is.
And we don't, the city police doesn't contract for service for township?
We do not.
Thank you. You know, I think officers in the schools provide a lot more than just calls for service. It's, you know, they're a visibility, they create relationships with many, many children and families. It's much broader effect having them in the schools than just, you know, responding as, you know, as needed, so.
Yeah, it really is. And if you look at what's going on in this nation, and you look at the distrust of the police and the problems that many communities are having, I'll suggest to you that good, healthy relationships with police officers and government early in life carries through for these students for their entire life.
So I'll just make one final comment that I actually agree with Commissioner Sodeman on this issue. It's not anything that I think needs to be debated very much. So anybody else? Anyone else? I just wanted to thank you very much. It's a privilege to have police officers here. You know, I was a firefighter, but if I knew you were the boss, I'd consider being a cop, I think. Consider it. But also, I want to make sure that, I also state that Dave and I are classmates, class of '74 at Craig High School. So another proud accomplishment of the Janesville School District Police Chief here. So anyone else?
You know, I'll be speaking to the retired teachers next month. And as I pondered my message, I started thinking about all of the police officers that came through the Janesville School District and now are a part of our force. And it's many. And I think that's a tribute to the work that all of you in this room do and the board to see that we have this quality education and these young kids grow up and serve our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Well, go ahead.
Well, and I also appreciate you coming and presenting. We're a scary bunch to present to usually. And I worked very closely with the police liaison in my time in the district, and they're wonderful resources. I know they're really there to help the students and the staff, which I really appreciate.
Thank you.
All right. What's right in education?
Thank you, Board President. This evening, for a little twist on what's right in education, I have invited the principals who are attending our board meeting to talk about what's right in education in their selected schools. So who would like to go first? Mr. Lau, principal, proud principal of Parker High School.
Good evening. I'm excited to share with you that 80% of our students participated in the Say Something campaign that our student representative spoke about last meeting. In this campaign, it's our work with Crime Stoppers and with Suicide Prevention Month to get the idea out to students that we want them to say something if they or someone they know of is in danger. And we've got a wonderful banner that our kids have signed, so please take a look at that the next time you're out at Parker. I also like to share with you that 75 students attended the Wisconsin Education Fair at Beloit last week. Our target audience was students who are college-bound but still unsure of where they wish to attend. This was a collaborative effort between Parker High School and the curriculum office, and this was a great opportunity for our kids. Most importantly, next week is homecoming, the most exciting week of the year in a high school. Our theme is Carnival. We'll have dress-up days, the 10th Annual Homecoming Parade, which was brought back to Janesville by Parker High School, football on Friday, oodles of sports throughout the week, and of course, the dance on Saturday. So it'll be an exciting, long week at Parker next week.
Thank you, Principal Lau. Next, Mr. Jim Lemire, principal at Edison Middle School.
What's right at Edison? I'd like to start off by saying this school year, we are working on a one-to-one blended learning at Edison Middle School. Each student at our school right now, which is roughly about 600 students, has a Chromebook that they take each and every day, from 8:00 to 3:23 each day, that they carry them. I've been cautiously optimistic as they do not, I haven't heard them down the floor or go down the stairs or hit off the ground, so we are working very well. And the teachers are working on, in a blended learning model, they are working on direct instruction, which is students in front of you, communicating with them and teaching them, and then also providing them digital content where the kids interact with their technology and they're working within their classrooms. Among that, we have purchased Alex, which is a math program. You may hear Achieve 3000, which is a reading program, which is digital content, and Quill, which helps with our English language learners, or English language arts students. Our math department is holding a math night in October. It will be October 3rd from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. to work with Alex and talk about parents. We're even providing some ice cream. If any of you would like to come and you like ice cream, please feel free. Our challenge classes are heading to the American Players Theater in Spring Green to watch a comedy of airs. Two of our teachers at Edison Middle School were recipients of the Herb Cole philanthropies for classroom materials. Kirsten Sauer, art teacher, and Danielle Vind, who is a 7th grade science teacher, were awarded materials through DonorsChoose.org. I believe Kirsten got some cameras and some art supplies, and Danielle Vind received a novel set that was donated to her classroom. Right now, I'm working on Edison being live on Facebook and Twitter. I do not have a personal Facebook, so I'm learning it as we go. Follow us at Janesville Edison Middle School, that's on Facebook, and Twitter is Edison1649, which is the start of our address. We are live streaming our morning announcements each morning on YouTube, brought to you by Andy LaChance and Bill Letourneau and their comedy, or what they think is comedy, each morning on announcements. And soon, we're looking to have students start producing those announcements and doing them themselves. We've had a number of speakers come to Edison this school year to talk with our students. Mike McGowan came to speak with our peer mediators and talk about school positivity, choices, and effort. We have a number of engineers that have come to our 7th grade classrooms to talk about engineering, and they volunteered to give interviews. So students are asking them what they did and how they became engineers. November 4th will be a big day coming up, will be our career day at Edison Middle School, our first one of the year. We are scheduled to have 30 people to visit Edison Middle School from businesses around Rock County to speak to our students about their careers. We're scheduling them by career clusters. For example, agriculture, food and natural resources, architecture and construction, arts, audio/video tech, business management, education, finance, government, health science, hospitality, and tourism, human services, info tech, law, public safety, manufacturing, marketing, science tech, and transportation. So we're doing our best to try to get someone from each of those areas for November 4th. This will be our first of three career days this year that we're working on at Edison Middle School. Two more. Our annual tug-of-war will be October 25th. Students will be challenging other pods in grade levels, and then we'll have an all-star student team challenging our teachers. We have our first-year teachers, it's mandatory for them to be in the tug-of-war. And then we also strategically place some members on the team to ensure victory. And our first scheduled fun run is this Friday. Each grade level will walk, run the Edison Mile, or block, if you will, to prepare for the school day to promote health and wellness through our physical education. And one thing I wanted to add, last year, we did our fun runs before the Wisconsin Forward Exam each morning to get those neurons firing as much as possible before they sat down and took their test. Those are what's right at Edison.
And last, but certainly not least, principal at Harrison Elementary School, Jessica Grant Turk.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to speak a little bit tonight. Obviously, you saw Haley and Colton, two of my very proud Harrison Hawks. I was happy to share those two lovely little cherubs with you tonight. A couple of things I just wanted to mention quickly about Harrison Elementary School. We now also have a free little library that is on our grounds outside of Harrison Elementary School. It was donated to us by Ron and Sarah Benish. Sarah Benish is actually the secretary to the principal at Harrison, and she's phenomenal. And she roped her husband, Ron, into constructing that for us, and it now sits proudly on our Harrison campus. So if anybody out there for our kids, so that's pretty exciting. It's a big week at Harrison next week. It is our spirit week. So we do one annual fundraiser at Harrison every year, and that's the Walk with the Hawks. And that will happen next Friday at 2:00 p.m. All of you are certainly invited to join us. Leading up to that event on Friday, we will have various dress-up days, including mismatched day, dressed as your favorite character day, and those kinds of things. What's wonderful is that we actually invite members of the community to come in and judge those spirit contest days, because it's a classroom competition. So we will have members of the Janesville Police Department are coming. We have some Janesville firefighters who are coming, the Janesville Jets are coming, and Dr. Schulte and board members, I believe there will be an invitation coming to you to come and judge one of the spirit days if you are so inclined. So that is next week. That's always a really big deal at Harrison. We also have our first Scoopy Night of the Year next Wednesday at the Milton Avenue Culvers. So if you like cheese curds or custard, please feel free to come out to the Milton Avenue Culvers. That would be fantastic. I would also like to take just a minute to give a quick shout-out to the students of Harrison. They are second to none. And also to the staff of Harrison Elementary School, second to none, and in particular, Jody Adler. You heard Dr. Schulte mention earlier, the Teacher of the Year banquet that we'll be having in December. And Jody Adler, who is a kindergarten and first-grade multi-age teacher at Harrison, is one of the recipients of that award. Jody Adler is implementing personalized learning in her classroom, and I would certainly invite all of you to come out and witness that firsthand. Jody is a fantastic teacher, and she's doing really wonderful things in her classroom. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Any comments or questions?
I have a couple. Regarding the report that we received, the What's Right in Education, mine is more of a suggestion. This is probably coupled a little bit with our later discussion on goals. But the beginning, as we look at safety, one of the things that I would, as we have seen as board members, there have been way too many serious student injuries. And it's one thought to just say, students will do things like that, because that is true. Injuries happen. But one of the things I'd like for us to at least consider taking the next step with this report is, as the incidents happen, then let's actually talk about them. So, because I know we have incident reports, so let's include the incident reports. So maybe the safety section would be separate from maybe the What's Right in Education. Maybe it's just a safety report of the incidents. And so, number one, everyone can see what the incidences were, and what are we doing to prevent the same incident in the future. So that's a suggestion I would make. And the other one, maybe this is more directed for the principals. I know at some point, we're going to talk about positive parent contacts. Well, think about the parent who hasn't received a positive parent contact. I finally had one of those with my son in high school, and he's a junior. So you're like, now, it was no issues, which is positive in one way, but when we highlight positive parent contacts, can leave a parent going, okay, so is it the case that my student didn't do anything positive? Or is it just nothing? So just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, next, presentation of the 2016 Summer School Report. Mr. Stengel.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Stengel, and I am the Director of Summer School. Tonight, I will be reviewing and highlighting the 2016 Summer School program for you. Let me begin by saying that we're really proud of the changes that we've enacted over the last several years in summer school. We've enacted these changes based on our goals and vision. And our main three are up on the board there that you can see, and you'll be hearing about those throughout the presentation. The first is that we view summer school as a continuation of learning from the regular school year into the summer. Next is, it's a time for exploration of innovative practices on the part of our teacher. And finally, it's an opportunity to, excuse me, it's a chance to create opportunities for our students. This summer, our summer school programming ran from June 13th through August 24th. It was held at all 12 elementary schools, the three middle schools, both high schools, Rock River Charter School, Tagos, and Rise Virtual Academy. As you can see, over the last six years, our enrollment in summer school has increased by approximately 700-plus students over that span of time, which is about a 21% increase, which means this summer, we approximately about 3,500 students participated in summer school in one form or another. At the elementary schools, there's a real continuation of learning which occurs. This is because we have neighborhood programming at most of our schools. And again, what this means is that the staff and the students are mostly from, or attend that school during the regular school year. When that happens, the staff knows the students' needs, they know what, they know what goals the kids are working on, based on such assessments as STAR tests and the CBAs. The students know the building and the behavioral expectations. And when that happens, the students can get right to teaching the students, and they're able to try some new innovative teaching strategies. Over the years, some of these have included personalized learning, engineering's elementary, and computer coding. And those then occur during the regular school year, so that's a good time to pilot those Our middle school programming focuses mainly on STEM. At Franklin and Marshall, students participated in such programs as they designed, I'm sorry, they integrated their curriculums by, for example, designing a catapult and studying the angles and measuring and seeing how far they could launch a ball. At Marshall, they also, they studied water runoff and how to prevent water runoff from getting into our rivers. At Edison, students could take a variety of courses, including reading, math, band, technology, motorhead tech. This year, for the first time, they offered a play in conjunction with Theaters Unlimited, and they offered Peer Pan over three nights at the end of the summer school session. High schools, again, mainly focused in on remediation, and it's a chance for students to take classes that they had failed so that they can graduate on time with their peers. But we are offering some enrichment programming for our students. We offered at Parker, Speed, Strength &amp; Conditioning. We also offered at both Craig and Parker, the ACT prep course. And for the first time this summer, we offered an AP Calculus prep course. All three of these classes are very well-attended, and we're looking to expand on them in the In addition, we also offer some enrichment through our week-long robotics programs. We offer Young Engineers Camp, which teaches the kids simple machines, and this is an extension of the regular school year, the curriculum that they learn in science. Our middle school's students, they can take LEGO Robotics Camp and VEX Robotics Camps and the VEX Robotics Camps. I believe Malik had talked about that being at one of the high schools at Rock River Charter. But again, students are learning computer programming and how to build a robot and how to do a certain task. For the first time, we offered dedicated computer science classes this summer. For our middle school students, we offered a class called Coda Palooza, in which students worked on a video game, and there were, they were troubleshooting the game with the computer coding, and they, so scaffolding for them, and they were able to then make the game work and figure out the computer code that way. At our high school, we offered a class called Game Time Summertime, and the students actually designed and programmed their very own video game. Then we also offered a girls' coding class, and that was offered for middle and high school girls only. And the, in that class, girls identified a problem in the real world, then they created an app for a smartphone, and then they tested out that app, and then they had to do a marketing pitch to promote that app. And Janesville Gazette actually did a story on that this summer. In addition, we have, we offered environmental science classes. At Janesville Schools Outdoor Lab, or JSOL, we offered survival science, in which students learned how to collect water, build fire, and design a shelter. We also offered nature navigators. During that class, the students learned about the plants and animals at JSOL, and also the ecosystem and the stream that goes through and how to keep that clean. We also offered our Saunters class, which is very popular. And with that, the students traveled to a different portion of the Ice Age Trail, and then they get out and they learn about, again, the plants, the animals, they learn about the benefits of hiking. This year, we offered a more extreme version of that, in which the students traveled to Whitewater, and over the series of three days, they hiked 30 miles. And again, they learned about the plants, animals, and the health benefits of nature and hiking. History camp was held in conjunction with Rock County Historical Society. Students studied their ancestry, they learned about archaeology by participating in a mock dig. They traveled to different locations throughout the city to study the rich history and the architecture throughout the city, and they also learned about museum curation. For the first time, we offered a Global Ambassador Academy, and about, approximately 75 students from Janesville participated in this class. And during this class, the students studied STEM, global political and social language differences, right alongside students who came from China and Mexico for the couple weeks in the summer. So they received a very rich experience for free, you know, in the summer for that. So that was great. This year's high school musical, the summer school musical, was Rodgers and Hammerstein's Carousel, which was very well-done. We received a lot of positive feedback about the choreography of it, the singing, the set design, and it was, went over very well. Like I said, we got a lot of great reviews. And again, this musical, students from surrounding communities also participate in that musical. So going forward, we just look to expand on the success that we've had in summer school by continuing to focus on our goals of continuing the education from the regular school year into the summer, to try some new innovative practices, and to provide opportunities for our students. So looking forward for 2017, summer school is projected to start June 12th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Comments?
I just wanted to thank Paul for all his work. According to DPI, there's 396 summer school programs in this state, and Janesville runs the ninth-largest in the state of Wisconsin. And Paul does it with a very limited staff and excellent head teachers, so I think we need to congratulate him for his work.
I didn't know we had the ninth-largest, so thank you. Any other questions?
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Pennington, update on progress of preparation of fiscal 1617 operating budget.
The end of September, we're getting close to the budget, so we've got an update now. It'll be... It'll be only two more after this, I guess, so it's time to get, time to get serious and look at the numbers. Just to remind us, there's going to be some changes in this report from the prior month or the prior meeting, I should say, and I'll try to highlight all of them. Part of our assumptions that we've made in the budget process so far was that we had not changed anything from revenue caps that were given us on July 1st. At the last meeting, I said it will change, and we all knew it would change, by the advanced refunding, Act 32 work, adjusted revenue caps, and the updated third Friday count. Well, numbers one and two have already occurred. We had the Act 32 approval last week, or the last meeting, I believe, and the advanced refunding went through too. So we have put those numbers in our calculations for the aid, of course, with the assumption that we will fully utilize our revenue caps. So there will be some changes made to our net receipts when we get to that slide. So two of the four things have happened. The actual spending revenue cap, we will not get until October 15th, and the third Friday count, which we just had, that number will also get thrown into the calculation where we get those numbers on October 15th. So we will not have those actual numbers until right before the last board meeting. Here's our known and potential budget changes. There's one change, there's still four items, same four items that were here last time. One thing, though, was we got a revised amount of the wage increase due to the PPS from HR. And before it had been $1,340, and it is now $1,275. I believe the original schedule did not take into effect partial FTEs. So if somebody worked as a, as a .8 teacher, let's just say, they were counted as a 1 before, and so this was revised and made more accurate. Went down from a, from $1,340 to $1,275, so that decreased our known expenses by $65,000, now $1,855. On the budget changes for savings, top two remain the same, the $1 million and the $855. As I said, we did get two additional pieces of information for our net aid and levy. And the biggest change was that we qualify now for transfer of service funds. What that means is that when other school districts transfer someone to our school district that has extreme needs or is an English learner, we can then add those costs to our revenue cap. That was about $185,000. So before, our net aid and levy was $280, now it's $465. We also have the Jeep Summer and School Year Program on there, because those were approved a meeting or two ago. And the 130 is not the amount of revenue, that's the amount of revenue above what we had last year. So we've added those two items to the schedule, and now have about $2.5 million of increases, if you want to call it that, either pieces of revenue, or, well, they're all pieces of revenue, I guess, in this case, than we had last year. So match the two numbers together, we get 100, add of $180,000 on the top line and add of the $65,000 on the second line. Right now, our net surplus is about $600,000. At the last meeting, it was about $350,000. Now, when we prepare the budget, we have to collect a ton of information, as you would know, sort through it, calculate it, sort it out, and it's the kind of thing where you work on the budget, and you work on it, and you work on it, and you're 20% done, 40% done, 50% done, and then in a matter of about three days, you go from about 50% to 80%. And that happened over this weekend. And one of the things that has come to the forefront that just came today, we had a agenda setting meeting at 7:30, and this was after that meeting, it came mid-morning, was that we have a calculation where we may have, we will probably have a positive adjustment with maintenance of effort again this year. So we will continue to look into the detail and put that together and possibly get information out before the next board meeting, but it looks like we may have some more positive news to go to with, with this $600,000 difference. Just wanted to throw it out there right now. Two things that haven't been included yet, because they were partially approved, were capital improvements and capital budget for the IT. And later in the meeting, we will be requesting the remainder of the capital improvement plan, but only up to the amount of last year's budget. This went through Finance Committee, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but since I have the slide up here, I just wanted to talk about it. Our original request was to exceed last year's number by $270,000, but that was before we did the Act 32 work. And because we received the extra money for Act 32, we thought it a little more prudent just to ask for what we had last year in the regular capital equipment. The IT capital budget will probably be brought to the next board meeting as well. So if, if the amount is approved that we request later in the meeting, then that $270,000 will disappear as a potential increase from last year. Additional items, those remain the same. These are the items that Dr. Sheltie highlighted. The only change on this schedule was one, we thought the change in the police liaison was going to be 93, but as Chief Moore showed earlier, it's going to be 103. So the total on this schedule will change to $769,000 as potential items. Again, these have not been requested. These are items out there that if there is additional money, it's Dr. Sheltie's priorities and things we would focus, focus on probably at the next board meeting. So we will have, this is incorrect, the public hearing will not be on October 11th, it will be at the second board meeting. And then the final certificate, final certification will be October 14th, because the 15th is a weekend, and we're still shooting to have the levy on October 31st. So things are starting to change, we're starting to get some totals, and we'll have some good items to discuss at the next board meeting.
The previous slide, 31st is the date must be by, that wasn't meant to be the date we're going to do that, correct?
Correct. That's the deadline. As is planned, let's put it that way.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Building &amp; Grounds Committee report. Mr. Arger.
Yes. Our meeting was last Tuesday, the 20th. We did not have a quorum, so all of the items to be approved just came, will come to the board later in this meeting with no recommendation from our committee. But a few items I did want to comment on. We approved the year-to-date financials, and one of the items within that, I'm not sure if anyone noticed, but we received 15% of our state aid, well, earlier this month, and we will receive 25% in November. Historically, it's been 40% in November, so we're able to have a little bit more, so that helps out a little earlier. So we definitely should not be anywhere close to any short-term borrowing, but we even at a more comfortable level than we typically have been.
No.
Do we know? No, we don't.
Because we had, we had proposed a resolution last year.
Yeah, well, so hopefully that means the state's listening, but, but nothing came through saying specifically why. But I thought that was worth noting. Also, one of the items, last meeting, the busing attendance system came up, and that was something I hadn't necessarily clued in on, so I thought it was worth for us to just go through. And the main reason of going to a new system is to have better accuracy of the students who are actually riding the bus. And the importance of that is the state reimburs us not a lot of money, $25,000 roughly per year. The system cost about $20,000 increment, so it basically pays for itself the first year, and then it will continue to pay for itself, and then accept it'll be revenue. So that was one of the other items. And last item I want to mention is the energy usage. We were $160,000 under our budget for the fiscal 1516. And the one item that I noted is, if we think about overall, the energy, I would say the state of the energy, it was a lower energy use time. So it's one of those, it can hide a lot of the good things that were done, but also it hides some of the things that we don't necessarily do so well. So one of the items that I at least wanted to highlight is the behavior that we must still have. When, as we look at energy usage and efficiency, and the one item I mentioned, which it's one that I see time and time again, it is dealing with the building envelope and managing that. So one of the things is as we have double doors, we'll often see one set of double doors propped open, and people would do it for, because it is more of a nuisance to go through a door and go through another door, but they don't necessarily understand the reason for that first set of doors is for energy efficiency. So I pointed that out, because we had it here at the ESC, the fore end on Franklin, and since I commented, the door has been closed. So it was definitely listened to. So, and so as a heads up to the principals, Commissioner Hoof, possibly Commissioner Millard, and myself will be visiting schools, and I will point out the good and the bad with respect to that one, because I've mentioned it now a couple of different times. So it's just, behavior is one of those things that ultimately saves more energy than the money we spend to replace various items, because behavior drives a huge piece of that. That's the highlights from the Finance, Buildings &amp; Grounds Committee meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14, consider possible approval of the 1617 Capital Improvement Plan.
There was a item in your board packet which highlighted the request for additional money for the capital improvement plan. If you recall, on May 24th, the $1,112,524 was approved for the capital improvement plan. Last year, we had asked for a million, or this year, we asked for $1,873. The year before, we had only received $1,603,24. So what we're doing tonight is coming to ask for the remaining $490,500 for capital improvement plan to roughly, or to run our amount for 1617 to $1,603,24. We discussed this at the Finance Committee, and they brought this motion forward without a quorum.
I move approval of the 201617 Capital Improvement Plan as presented. There's a motion in a second. Anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay, let's vote. That passes unanimously 9-0. Item 15, consider possible approval of fiscal 1617 budgets for Fund 38, Fund 39, Fund 46, Fund 72, and Fund 73.
Two things before we get into this. Number one, we, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if we hold off on Fund 73. Part of the information we received today was that we may have to make some adjustments for an implicit rate subsidy to our OPEB plan. That would affect Fund 73, so we're pulling that out for now until we know exactly what we would like to do with that calculation. I also put on the table a new updated Fund 72, the one that was sent to you is erroneous as it didn't have any numbers in the final column, so you've got a new piece of paper for that. What these items are, Fund 7, Fund 38 is our debt service for, the only issue we have under Fund 38 was our WRS refinancing of maybe two or three years ago. So the funding for that is only in Fund 38, and the numbers on your schedule come right off the debt payment schedule. What always makes it unique for the debt payments and for the debt funds 38 and 39 is that the revenue on the schedule is the calendar year amount and the expenses are the fiscal year amount. That's just the way they do it. So you can see that, you know, the tax levy for Fund 38 is basically the same as it was the year before. We weren't expecting any difference. That's going to be steady throughout the life of that funding until, I believe, it's 2029. Fund 39, on the other hand, that is all of our referendum debt, as well as the advanced refunding that we just had occur, that actually closed on September 16th. And again, if you look at the tax levy, when I said before that we were going, when I put new numbers into the tax calculation, you can see, as was advertised, our debt retirement tax levy for Fund 39 went from $8,130,000 down to $7,698,000, so about $450,000. About 395 of that was directly the result of the advanced refunding. The rest was just normal trickle-down and reduction of the other debt. So again, Fund 39 comes straight off the loan schedules. There's really no, really no guesstimating or forecasts or predictions on that. Fund 46 is pretty simple. That's our fund where we've made two deposits for future use for capital improvement plans. If you look at the budget, we put the $20,000 in two years ago to get the clock started, put in $750,000 last year, and this year, we are budgeting zero for the contribution because historically, we have treated that as something we look at at the end of the year if we happen to have excess funding. And with our $1,600,000, Act 32 this year, we know we're catching up on our fixed assets as we go. So that's why that's a zero balance. The new 72, what this is, is we account for scholarships and, or primarily, yes, scholarships, I guess you'd call it. These are donations received through either wills or through people that just want to donate money, and they're for specific items. The Bidwell Scholarship's been around for quite a while. It was originated to give college scholarships to those who had, I believe, been in the military for two years. The CapEx Scholarship, I believe, is a music scholarship, and the Craig Exelon Scholarship is a science scholarship. We just, we just manage, we don't really manage the funds. They are held by whoever was designated by the people who gave the money. We just account for them here and record them every time a scholarship has been issued. So again, we're not, we don't really forecast any expenditures, because the difference between doing it and not doing it is very immaterial. We'll record it when it happens. All of these funds are totally separate from our Fund 10 and our Fund 27, our operating fund, and our special education fund. So these are their own islands, their own units, similar to the Fund 50 that we had before. So what I'm asking today is approval of Fund 38, Fund 39, Fund 46, and the Fund 72 budgets.
I move approval.
There's a motion in a second? Questions? Comments? Okay, go ahead. Do we ever encourage people to participate in Fund 72? I guess I'd never seen a printout of this, or noticed a printout of this, that we would have, you know, the Murray Fund, provide Murray scholarships for firefighters, or is there, is there a marketing piece that goes with this?
Not that I'm aware of. We have had a foundation working for donations that would be similar. It was a separate entity, and that was kind of the same thing, to donate money to your school or whatever, but with regards to the Fund 72, not that I'm aware of.
All right, let's vote on this. That passes unanimously 9-0. Consider approval, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an energy services
As we did at a few previous board meeting, the board approved using $1,600,000 for Act 32 money. That money has been put into the tax calculation again, and as you noted before, the net amount we received for our aid and for our tax levy still exceeds what we had last year, although if that was to be our ending tax levy, the taxed amount would go down for the, for the taxpayers, primarily because our valuation grew by $100 million again for the area. So... So even though that was included, it's been approved. We know which items are going to be worked on for the million six. I sent a copy of the resolution, which is fairly lengthy, and showed the items that are going to be worked on for that. And this is just the official resolution that's required by DPI to get the process going. After we start this, then we have to file a considerable amount of paperwork to the DPI, which shows the items, which shows the energy savings, which shows the operational savings. What was page two of the two-page attachment? And then we follow up on that by the end of the year. So this is a, this is kind of putting the final, the final touch for, of board approval on the project.
Thank you. There can be a motion to approve.
Motion.
There's a motion in a second? Anyone? Let's vote. And that passes unanimously nine zero. Item seventeen, update on teacher-pupil ratio.
Want to get you go?
I'm good.
All right.
Good to go.
Well, good evening. Just an update quickly on our teacher-pupil ratio. Essentially, every year, the board approves the staffing plan typically in the spring. And as we do that, the staffing plan is grounded in Board Policy forty-two twenty-one, which talks about teacher-pupil ratios. K-three, the teacher-pupil ratio, one teacher to twenty-five students. And in four-five, it's thirty as well as six-eight-thirty. So every year, as we look at that over the summer, we, we kind of clench our fists, and we clench our jaws, and we wait to see what the numbers are going to look like. And we kind of play a guessing game with making sure that our staffing plan works. One of the, one of the things that we have in the staffing plan are contingencies. And the board has historically approved what we call contingency funds in case we have to hire extra staff for a bubble in particular, a section of third grade, for example, at a particular school here, there, or elsewhere. This year, we, we actually have used, currently, we've used eighty percent of our contingency funds that you approved last year. So we have used a hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars to help with the ratios and make sure that our ratios stay within the guidelines per the board policy. I've outlined in the chart there that's in your, in your board packet where we've used those contingencies, the, the funds. And if you have any questions, I'm certainly here to answer those. Third Friday count has not yet been verified, but we'll continue to monitor that as the year goes on to make sure. In case we have to go back and use more contingency funds, we may have to ask you. This is just a big in case. We may have to come back and ask you for more if, if that is necessary. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody? All right, thanks. Next, review sixteen seventeen district goals and consider possible approval.
Thank you, Board President Murray. We are going to start with me passing out fifteen sixteen goals, just so you have them in front of you for comparison. They're usually on the screen. They won't be right now. But we'll pass those around, and they were also in your board packet. Once you have that, I will also pass around the sixteen seventeen goals. Now, what I've added are some of the suggested goals. This is a draft. You can change any of them, but you'll see how they look as it stands now. So I'll pass those around. Take one. Make sure Deb gets one back there, and then we can pass them on back. Okay, so the first pillar is service. And you can see, we didn't change the goals. We carried over the goals from the previous year in years. The parent satisfaction score, which comes from our parent survey, we've had, I think from its inception, eight or nine years ago. So we've continued that. And then the second one is the student survey score. So I think we'll take each one of these, one by one. If there are questions or suggestions, go ahead and mention those now.
Anyone on the service goal or pillar? Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Stoltz D., the rubrics or the totals are like formulas that student group gives us that if you had this number here, you want to raise it. So it's kind of a in.
It's a formula we've used over all these years, yes.
Okay, let's move on.
All right, that was easy. The next goal, I always think of the quality goal as our, really our mission, the most important thing we do in the school district of Janesville. And that is looking at student achievement and looking at how we can do better. I'm going to have Dr. Earhart talk about this goal, if you would.
Well, the first part that you will see is the accountability score with the state report card. That information will be due to us by October thirty-one. So we'll be able to look at exactly what the result is for that. Last year, we used the STAR assessment as an important data point because we didn't have the state report card. And this year, we are suggesting to move the percentile increase to sixty percent. That means that sixty percent of our students will, will be growing their, their student achievement. And last year, we set it at forty percent. We, it was a new assessment. And based on our data from last year, we believe that we can move it forward to sixty now. By moving it to sixty, that's, that's a more aggressive goal. But we believe it's consistent with promoting the kind of growth that we're looking for in student achievement.
Questions about that?
Go ahead, Bill.
There you go. So when the result shows fifty-seven percent, that's, you don't have results? That is, we do have results?
That was our result this year.
For STAR, yes.
Yeah, first, first time out.
So the one we're waiting for yet is.
Is the state.
Okay. So it doesn't say forty percent of our students will have growth. It's a show of forty percent increase in the growth. But I mean, that's not the, the, the old goal of forty percent. Explain that again, as far as what that means for.
Well, this was the first time around with that assessment. I, I do think we had some perhaps confusing language in that. And so the revised goal for that looks at sixty percent of our students through the STAR assessment will be showing the expected growth. And the sixty percent is a higher than the typical average rate.
Okay, so sixty percent of our kids will show growth that exceeds a certain amount, will show growth. I mean, tell me, first I'm saying, why are a hundred percent of our kids showing growth? I guess this is my first question. And so how, I'm misunderstanding that term, I think. So help me out again.
Well, a hundred percent would be wonderful. And I believe that would be a kind of a comparison to Lake Wobegon. And so when, when you look at student achievement scores and, because everyone unfortunately doesn't grow every year the way we would like them. But in this particular instrument, instrument, if you have sixty percent of your kids showing that level of growth, that is a very.
What level of growth?
Sixty percent. I mean, they're grow, as measured on this assessment. From the time they start to the, and we give this assessment three times a year. So from the time, your first assessment, which they just took until the third one, if sixty percent of those kids are, are showing that level of growth, that, that will, that then will correlate with the state test for some pretty positive results.
I think the question.
I'm doing a terrible job of answering my question.
I think the question is, what is the percentage of growth? Is there a percentage of growth? We know we want sixty percent of our kids to grow, but is there another marker we're looking at?
Well, the average range is, for, the average range of expected growth is between forty-nine, or forty and fifty-nine. Yeah, so we're, we're going above that.
I'm a fourth grader, and I know this much. I'm now a fifth grader. Aren't I, aren't I growing? I mean, am I missing this completely? Shouldn't everybody be growing in their knowledge year to year? Or am I misunderstanding the?
Correct.
And how much are they growing?
Okay, so sixty percent will grow by what?
They're, they're expected to grow. Everyone's supposed to grow, but Sig, we're looking at sixty percent of them reaching their expected growth every year.
Okay.
That better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where I read it was like sixty percent are at least growing somehow.
No, there's an expected growth.
All right, thank you. Sorry to be a pain. I just didn't quite understand.
Always enjoy answering your questions.
Dr. Earhart, is the, the growth rate that's expected, how does that compare to like some other things that I've experienced? Like with, you know, the number that meets or exceeds, you know, the expectation on a test? How did, how does this, how's it look?
The STAR assessment is, is best correlated with the state test. So again, and why we use STAR is, and again, it's, it's a precursor to how, what we're going to do on the state test. Because that's, that's administered once a year. So the STAR is telling us, are we staying on the particular trend line that we're moving? Are we trying to go forward? So it's mostly aligned with, with the state test, and which is aligned with the state standards. So it, it helps us do mid-course corrections. If, if, in, in particular, we look at the, the second administration of the test, we give one now so you kind of get the readiness level. But the second administration, we really look to see where things are going. And if kids aren't at that particular growth rate, then we, you know, look at a series of interventions. And then the third administration of the assessment then kind of confirms where we're going. But it helps really be a predictor of, of success on the state test.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
And there's two measurements on this growth. There's the accountability score, which we had not got yet. And the current goal was being a top three of the largest eighteen schools. And the blank here of, is the recommendation that, that, that we're having as part of this as well? That we're going to fill that blank in, or what is our?
Oh, certainly. You mean on the first one?
Yeah.
Yes, when we get it.
So after we determine if we're in the top three or not now, it might affect if we're going to shoot for the top three, top four, top two for next year.
Correct. But we can't know that until the first meeting in November, really, is when we'll have that data.
I think the other factor, this is, this is the first time we're using this assessment. So we don't really know where we're, we're going to end up. But we're still setting our sights high.
Obviously, the board can choose to keep that or not, based on what you want to do.
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
The next pillar is people. And Commissioner Hayworth submitted the goals for this one. So I'll turn it over to her, if she still has a voice. If not, I'll take over. I might need you to. Can you please, sorry? Well, I guess I'll try. I wanted us to just show that we are investing in our people and show the employees that we value their growth and want to provide them opportunities. So I just wanted us to call it out specifically in the goals and make sure that that's, you know, that we utilize that and measure against that. So I think you said that we do four a year? We have four professional development days a year, but for certified staff. So that's the minimum for them, certainly. And want, want them to all participate. But for non-certified staff, we probably fall short of that. And that's an area we really want to take a good look at.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
So if we approve this, there'd be two measurements. That'd be like a yes or no, did we, or not meet providing four opportunities? Plus, we'd have a score in the bottom. So it'd be, again, two measurements under that goal. We then later on determine how much weight is given to each, each measurement? Or is that how we proceed then, or?
Are you talking about the two different goals or within one goal?
The, the, the two people measurements, or two measurements within a people goal, the one of Michelle just mentioned.
And then the employee satisfaction? Right, so there would be two.
And then later on, we would determine how much percent each one has for weight, as far as?
Oh, that's my line you're talking about? And that would come?
Separate from this.
Yes, and that would come next.
Okay. Next one.
The next one is finance. And if you've been on the board for a while, you know how we tend to struggle on this one. I left the goal the same with the, this reasoning. So the way it reads, the, balance the seventeen eighteen budget. And of course, we always have to balance the budget. That's mandated by state statute. Using fund balance and focus on an investment of, in people by allocating money for a competitive compensation package while maintaining a cost-effective infrastructure. And I like the wording, thanks to Oakley Ryan. I think she helped us with that. But we did that for certified staff in sixteen seventeen. That happened. So they have their, their payment structure. And we know that we are now working on that for non-certified staff. So I think let's do the same thing for them while keeping a balanced budget. So that's how I was looking at that one.
Go ahead. So you don't see the need to put any dollar figure in this one?
I wouldn't know at this point what to put in. So I set a balanced budget. That's what we need to, to attain at this point.
Well, we knew about a year ago, we're going to be short.
Right.
That's where we came up that three.
Three million. We will hear perhaps from our benefits committee in the future if, if there's money that we need to come up with and if we think we're going to be short. But at this point, I haven't been given any knowledge of seventeen eighteen, whether we'll be short or not.
All right, so I would assume then that we later on can put a figure in here because we can't just assume it's going to. I mean, we're going to be tight next year, and next year's budget to seven, seventeen eighteen as well, so.
The question would be, how tight? What are things coming in, expenses, that we're not aware of now that we know we're not going to be able to meet? So then we have to start looking for money. And I, we don't know that yet.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So in a sense, without going to referendum, meet our budget, and yet also those goals of investing in our people. That's kind of what you're saying?
Right, right. But it's going to have to all balance in the end.
Well, unless you go to referendum, then you can.
Right, right, yes.
So we're saying without referendum, basically, is that implied or is that stated? Or not stated?
It's not stated. It's not.
So going to referendum is on the table, then?
Well, it, it depends what we come up with, the amount that we come up with as a competitive package. I mean, there's a, I think there's some unknowns at this point.
Obviously, the money changes each year as far as what we get from the state and different.
Well, and the, what's, what's the biennial budget coming up? What's state aid for the next two years? That'll be huge. If we get some, then that'll be something to talk about.
Yeah, I would, I would add two words, or referendum after fund balance. I mean, that we're going to balance our budget without going to referendum would be the, to me, the, the goal financially.
Say that again?
I would add the words, or without going to referendum. So to me, the dollar amount is, is not as important to, to define as the fact that we're going to balance the budget, accomplish these things without asking the taxpayers beyond, you know, for referendum, for operational referendum, I guess. So without using those kind of funds, we, we balance our budget.
If the board wants to make that decision now, it seems premature to me, but.
But Bill, you, that seems contrad.
But Bill, that seems contradictory to what you normally say because typically, you would do this within the funding structure we currently have. And if we need to go beyond that, that'd be a separate question. You'd take the taxpayers on a referendum. You wouldn't include it in a goal statement. What you're basically saying is you want to have a goal that you don't go to referendum.
Right, exactly what I'm saying.
That doesn't really fit in a goal statement for growth of a district, that you don't go to referendum.
This is for finance. Are we not talking about finance?
We are. Typically, a goal is to stay within your funding structure. If you need to exceed your funding structure, you look for resources. That can be donations. It could be referendums. It could be any number of sources. But you don't typically put that in a goal statement within a set of board goals, that you don't utilize all resources available to you or all tools available to you. Referendum's a tool. Donation's a tool. All those things are tools, so...
Yeah, and I'm saying we should take the tool of referendum off the table. That's what I'm saying, exactly what I'm saying.
Okay. I don't agree with you.
Specifically, I know. I'm telling you exactly what I'm saying. Let's make a commitment to not do it.
I guess I don't see any other support for that change. Unless somebody else wants to speak up about that? Okay. Any other questions about the finance piece so far? All right, let's move on to growth.
All right, growth is another goal that Commissioner Hayworth wrote. So would you like to go ahead and explain that one a little bit?
So I don't want to minimize the importance of increasing our student population, but I would like to, I think that's always ongoing. It's something that we're always watching. But I would like to emphasize our commitment to being a global-ready and career-ready district with putting the emphasis and measurement around STEM and the activities and the opportunities that we offer our students. So the way I wrote it is ensure students are college and career-ready through full engagement in 21st century experiences through STEM, global literacies in all subject areas, digital literacies, and applied corporate partnerships. I wanted to call that out specifically because I think there's already a lot of good activity going on with our corporations in town, partnering with schools and coming in and letting them, us, go abroad or visit their facilities too. I think that that applied experience for our students helps them to see the value and really helps them figure out, what do I want to do next? So why am I here? Why am I learning this? And it ties together, you know, the personalized learning and everything. So a lot of measurements to this, but I think all good stuff.
I was just going to add one little piece. So we listed out a lot of things that we're basically going to count. So we'll have to get baseline on some of these. Some we know, some we don't. We started the STEM counting last year. So we can add or subtract any of these, but it's just keeping track of measures.
I guess all I was going to ask, great list, by the way, thank you. But I guess I didn't know if it was a, if we expected a certain percentage. I guess I was asking about the numbers, but I think you kind of answered that, that you're going to need to get the data first this year and know where we are. And then it would be something that we would work to grow on in following years. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. The one data point we have from this year is the STEM. Number of students. Thank you. I don't see it on mine. 5,000? Yeah, 4,951. So we could set a data point to increase that 10%, 20%. I mean, we certainly want to get more and more kids involved, and we have around 10,000 kids. So that's a percentage we could set.
I would suggest we add, even though this is plenty long, that we add after to include, I know, to include, but after to include, but before STEM in parentheses, but not limited to. Because during the school year, you may have other that are not listed here. I'd hate to have people think that this is the exhaustive list of things that we could do to make students college and career-ready. So if we just added but not limited to, it would make it something new could happen in January that we'd want students to participate in. I also support the concept because a year ago last October, we approved a new college and career readiness person, and I understand they're doing a fabulous job, based on what I've heard in the community. And it's a laudable goal for us to continue for multiple years with this district.
Sorry, one thing I wanted to add is the global part in here. I think I've mentioned before, I'm pretty passionate about middle school curriculum redesign and making sure that our kids in grade school and middle school are exposed to foreign languages earlier. So I hope that that kind of supports that and catapults that. And then also, the international program, I think it gives that director something to anchor to and is something that is now more of a focus of the district.
I think it's a wonderful list, and it's a great job working on there. But to me, those are like quality issues versus growth issues. And doing those things will help, you know, foster our growth. And to me, like I've said eight years in a row here now, we measure growth by how many people come versus how many people leave. Be open enrollment. That's why I still think that open enrollment number really measures how we're doing versus our neighbors and others of those who don't live here but come here anyway versus those who live here but leave. How that difference is, is how we can measure our growth and success. So I love all those goals and those items, but to me, they don't belong in that area, and they factor into how our district grows as far as student population measured by open enrollment. So I, you know, I was going to say that anyways, but I'll say it again. Thanks.
So would you like to add that back in? An open enrollment goal? That's fine.
Well, it gets really lengthy here, but to me, that's... Yeah. To me, that is still, the bottom line is people vote with their feet. And that's why I would select to keep that in there, so...
We've had that, I think, open enrollment goal, probably for eight or nine years. I'm not opposed to that. I'm proud to say we hit it and exceeded it this year, 101 students. And I think all our principals have become adept on keying in on that, too, as far as promoting their schools. It's fine with me.
On the open enrollment, this is a tongue-in-cheek question. I mean, how do we hustle the bodies when we set up the goal for... I mean, I have visions of people going to all the schools saying, come and join us in Janesville. What are you doing to actually entice people here?
We have done advertisements. We have done advertisements at local cinema for selected schools. ARISE did one, P4J has done some. We, through our webpage, is a way that we reach out all over the community. And that's, you know, a big task of our communications department, to get the word out to others.
And we do it by being successful in all these areas, offering the STEM programs, all the things that are making us known, our educational program, our Jeep, all those other things that make us, put us on the map, that we can talk about in the paper through the free advertising we get through our success. To me, is the biggest way we get people to walk to Janesville versus go to their current school.
If you look at the vision statement we created, growth through creation of innovative programs and/or initiatives such as STEM robotics, summer musical, challenge program, and many others. And also, I think we, a couple of years ago when we first had this goal, there was a very small list that qualified for student growth. And then last year or two, we included summer school, and we included international program to help with those numbers. You know, I don't... I haven't been a big fan of growth through numbers of head counts. I mean, I think the growth comes naturally through programming. So I don't know... And then we measure growth every count, right? Every third count. I mean, that certainly makes it clear to the public and the press how we're doing there. So I don't know that we need to include it anymore. That's just my opinion. But we need to kind of build a consensus here whether or not we want to continue with that.
The other thing, if I may mention, it's not that we would stop, really. It comes off the big billboard of what we're concentrating on. We'll still measure that. We're going to keep measuring a lot of things, and it'll go on one of those sheets that come underneath that. So is that the focus of our attention for the 16, 17 school year? That's really the question.
So trying to build a consensus here on give direction to administration and ourselves if we want to continue measuring the numbers of student count in this goal. Yes or no? Indifferent?
I mean, I'm okay with measuring student count. The one piece that's missing that we're not going to resolve tonight, in my mind, is when I've looked at other district websites in the state and in the nation, when you have goal statements like this, you should be able to live link. When you come to STEM, you should live link to things that are currently going on in STEM in Janesville, Wisconsin. And we were watching videos earlier that are two years old on our rolling publication. And the reality is, we have exemplary things going on every day. We heard about them this morning or this evening from the principals. So if there's a way that, I think, it's okay to measure it for another year and look at the populations and look at the numbers. But I think we are ready to make that leap forward to really showcasing when someone wants to come to Janesville, Wisconsin to come and join one of these new companies. They want to know what we're about by going to our website because they can choose. Districts in the area, private schools in the area, Illinois. It's a short drive from Illinois to Janesville. So I think we need to showcase those things, and it doesn't hurt to have the numbers for another year, in my opinion.
Okay. Looks like we have a consensus to include that. Thank you, everyone. So we're still on growth? There's a lot in there. Okay.
Maybe one other piece. So rather than just looking at, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Go ahead.
Rather than, I know we have the students visiting businesses, but I think about what Principal Lemire mentioned, with business leaders coming to the school, and that's exposing the students in a different way. So, and I'm not sure how to add that into the wording.